Need a motion to come out of closed session, please.
Stay moved.
All in favor, raise your right hand. If you would stand, um, the pledge, um... Mr. Falk, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, if you would, please, before we approve the agenda, if anybody will look through there, if there are any changes to the agenda, we need to make them now. If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda. I'm, I'm sorry. Well, I know. We'll get it together in a minute.
I had some questions, but I don't think they actually require agenda change. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Strickland. Thank you, Dr. Namaka. All in favor, raise your right hand. Good job. I'm sorry? Yes, sir, you're gonna have to remove that mask, Mr. Schwartz, because I can't understand what you're saying. Would this be Mrs. Ishi? Item C. Student registration process for second semester.
Okay, so you guys have copies in Word docs of two different, um, we're calling them registration contracts for second semester. At the moment, we're in Plan B, so we're assuming we're moving forward with the registration contract for students to choose for the spring semester, whether they are going to be in Plan B, which is the face-to-face hybrid model, or the all-virtual program for second semester. We've also included a version of this type of contract in case we have any students that are in Plan A. But for right now, we're in Plan B. We need to roll this out to schools like tomorrow, because they have to start finding out who's gonna sign up for what, so they can get response from families. And hopefully have that all done by Thanksgiving, so they can then make teacher assignments for, um, who's gonna cover the virtual students, who's gonna cover the face-to-face students. So if you look at the Plan B version that's in, um, Word docs, this was a draft a couple of weeks ago. We, the only thing we've updated that's different on this is in the very first bullet where it says under Plan B, six, I understand that six-foot distancing is required at all times, and students and staff will be distanced in classrooms and/or on the school bus. An actual point of fact, we're not required to do six-foot distancing on the bus. We're only required to have one student per seat. So we've rewritten that to say that in Plan B, they'll be distanced in classrooms, but it's not, I can't remember the specific wording, but it basically says, but there's no guarantee there will be six-foot distancing on the bus.
There will be one student per seat.
So we've translated this into Spanish, French, and Creole. We're kinda gonna go old-school. We've batted this around about the best way to get these done and get responses. Trying to do this electronically, well, we tried to do it electronically for semester. That was challenging, and we need a response from every family on this. This, you know, has them actually opt-in to be or virtual, and not just sign up for virtual. So we're sending out PDFs of all the different language versions to all the schools. They have choices about how to get one back physically from every child, including, um, homeroom teachers, or people can call the family on the phone to get their responses. The teacher can fill it in, and then the teacher sign it and date it, so we know who actually had the contact. They can do a drive-up event and have parents drive-through and actually fill it out right there. Um, they can send them home with students who are in face-to-face to try to get it back that way. They can electronically send the PDF and say, print this, fill it out, bring it back to school. They have a few weeks to do it. We, again, really wanna get this out to them tomorrow, so they can get started and get it back before Thanksgiving. Everything on here sort of indicates if there's a change, there's a change. But we have to move forward with something, so we can get the information about who's gonna be doing what. So this is our starting point. And, uh, we're planning to send them off.
Ms. Burden?
For the virtual students, um, those students gotta feel very comfortable with their technology. Can they just submit it back electronically to you?
So, it needs an actual parent initial and signature, so we want a hard copy. Again, they can do it by phone with a teacher who signs off. And I talked to Pat's mom, had the conversation, the teacher fill it in and sign it. But we need, we just, the problem with, uh, first semester, we've had a lot of people moving in and out of virtual, into face-to-face, back into virtual. And part of that, we needed to be flexible, because they really didn't know what they were signing up for and what might happen. Now, everybody kinda knows what happens in virtual, what happens in face-to-face. These bullet points that are on this contract pretty much spell it out. If you're signing up for this, this is what it looks like. We expect you to stick with it. Um, you know, we've talked a little bit with principals about if they've had kids who were in virtual first semester and never logged on and weren't successful at all, do they have to approve them for virtual again? And that, you know, your initial response to that is, well, no, if a kid's failing, you need to figure out a program that's gonna work for them. However, that child may have a medical reason why they can't do face-to-face. So those have to be handled on a case-by-case basis. We just need to get rolling with this. So we're planning to get rolling with where we are right now. We're in Plan B. Put it out there. If something changes, something will change, but we've gotta get started.
I think this is a good personal... On the buses, if they're the same family group, can they sit the same?
Yeah, that's the, there are a lot of these too. But the way we've had our buses, it's been one to see except for...
Any other questions?
This is where I meant to have a question, but apparently I messed up by not commending the agenda. This is just an update. This is not an opportunity for us to discuss if we're planning K-35 under Plan A in January or not. Is that correct? Because at this point, you're going for it with B, because that's what we have, and that's what we voted on, and that's where we're sitting. Um, but if in December...
Then we'll have to read...
We would be right back in the same situation if the board changes...
The board changes at any time, or the state changes, but if not, we're gonna have to re...
Like, you want to do whatever?
I'm already friends with it.
Well, if you create Plan A, all students return in K-5, then all you would have to do is address those parents that wants to stay virtual.
Well, we'd stop to put it out there. And A looks like, you know, here's the bullets, there won't be distancing, there'll be masks, you know?
Some parents have said they're okay with B, but not with A. And, and so it would just be...
So that's why you have the A version, that shows here's what A looks like, just in case you go there. We're ready to send it out. But right now, we're, we'll, we'll start here, and if something changes, we'll...
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Ishi.
Yep.
Confirmation?
Good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. I have for you, beginning at letter D, information only, the North Carolina School Board Association update memo. And we have added to that update the revisions there that have been approved and highlighted. You'll see that, um, there to continue with what Wayne County Public Schools has approved for certain policies and the dates. The committee ask and recommend it to me and my department that we keep an ongoing log of those, um, policies that have been approved and the dates that they were approved or recommended and where we stand. So that is for information only. In addition to all the other memos that are there for you. I'm gonna move forward to first readings. And, Mr. Chair, would you like me to take all of those E through G, mention them?
Ms. Mason, let me ask you a little more. Items E through J, are, are there any questions at all about any of that first readings? That way we don't have to go through everyone. If you have any questions, like I say, this is only basically the first reading, so...
Now's the time to speak up.
Do any board members have any questions? If not, we can handle E through J with all...
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, we'll move to K.
Yes, sir. And items K through S, have all those policies there listed, are in the 6,000 series? And our board attorneys met with the policy committee members and reviewed the policies listed there. Items J through S have all, excuse me, item K through S have all been reviewed?
So is this coming, I mean, the policy committee is good?
Yes, there's, there's actually no changes on any of those. It's just a way to let everyone know that we have reviewed them, and they are legal and, you know, good to stay in place just as they are. No changes.
Okay.
That's correct.
So are we good with K through S?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Mason.
Thank you.
I think you're still on board?
I am still here, yes, sir.
So we'll move to board action. Item A, Mrs....
Yes, sir. Second readings are listed there for the board, items A through D for your approval.
There, again, if we can group these together, unless anybody has any questions about them before we vote on them.
Mr. Chair, everything was pretty straightforward on these policies. Just coming in compliance, there was...
Can I have a motion to approve A through D, second reading?
Second.
Motion and a second. Um, all in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Moving right along, Title II, that would be you as well.
That's me, yes, sir. You have in Board docs a presentation that was provided to you with the 2021 funding for Title II Part A, which is improving teacher quality. This is for board approval to approve the funding. And our goals were submitted to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Our goals there, as provided under A and B, is to provide support to our beginning teachers and getting those teachers licensed. Um, also, the Human Resources Department collaborates with the Teaching and Learning Department to provide ongoing professional development for our teachers. We have listed also, under our second goal, for our teacher experience, to support, um, experienced teachers, retention and recruitment, where we provide a bonus in those areas that are hard to staff, where we are looking at staffing in the area of math, science, foreign language, and exceptional children. The bonus is in, um, a, a amount of $2,000, where $1,000 is given in the first year, and then second year for retention is another $1,000. We provide virtual job fairs for recruitment, and we also provide school-based mentors that are also experienced teachers to support our beginning teachers. Goal three, under Title II, is to address teacher effectiveness. Under that area, we provide ongoing professional development through contracted services, mentors that support classroom management, lesson plan development, as well as adherence to federal state policies. Our beginning teacher coordinators lead our effort under the Beginning Teacher Support Program for North Carolina and through the NESA's evaluation system. And then Human Resources Department works with our principals and teachers in utilizing these strategies to impact effectiveness in the classroom, in addition to ongoing collaboration with the Teaching and Learning Department with professional development. The Title II planning allotment for the 2021 school year is in the amount of $963,000 and $400... $963,411. This was an increase from the 1920 amount provided to us. And there, we submitted this budget to DPI in that amount of how we would support that under the goals, as you saw previously, under those areas to support our teachers.
What is the 27th thou, what is indirect, what's us, I mean, is that just clear, or what is that?
That's the amount that Wayne County Public School actually charges us to house this federal funding and support it here in Wayne County Public Schools. It's actually a cost from our finance department to support housing Title II in Wayne County. And it's called indirect costs for federal programs.
Okay.
Could you, um, uh, explain a little bit more about, um, the Beginning Teacher Coordinator's Director and the Title II Specialist?
Yes, sir.
How many people are involved in that?
So, under that area, with Beginning Teacher Coordinators, Director, and Title II Specialists, that is approximately about seven people in that area that are paid out of that program.
And that, does that, does that include their benefits as well?
Yes, sir, it does. Yes, yes, it does.
Any other questions for Dr. Mason?
I do have a question, and I think I know the answer before I ask it, but just to make sure. Um, I know this is what was submitted to DPI, so you can't change it for this year. But is Title II something that you could actually use to pay beginning teachers? So it would be out of our allotment, and we could have some of those extra spots?
There is a portion under Title II where if we're doing a classroom reduction, and there are certain positions that could be utilized out of that, yes.
So in the future, we may could pay for some local positions through Title II?
There could be, yes.
Any other questions? If not, I need a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask whether we approve the, um, Title II planning allotment, and it's...
Have a second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you, Dr. Mason.
Thank you.
And we'll move to item F, Dr. Artis.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Merrill, members of the board, um, around two weeks ago, I provided to you the digital plan of the district improvement plan and the digital version of the school improvement plans for your review. And, um, questions tonight, so that they can be approved and submitted to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction.
Any questions for Dr. Artis?
Are you covering both at this time?
Yes, I can answer both.
All right, I have a question, um, as my faculty have two questions, but, um, I'd like to start with, uh... I wanna know that the, the involvement of the principals and the leadership team members, are they trained on how to create these plans?
Yes, ma'am. Um, Wayne County Public Schools statute requires that we provide training each year on school improvement. Of course, this year, we were not able to offer that face-to-face, but that was provided digitally and, um, with one-on-one conferences. I also offered to go to any school and meet with the principal or their leadership team, and I was able to do all three. And it's during those trainings that I not only go over the platform and how to use it, but also what is required with regard to content and aligning them to our district goals and systemic, um, programs.
Well, one of the things that I noticed in, in, in reading the, um, school improvement plan is that, and I, I'd like to ask you, is there a set criteria that you use when you are evaluating them? Because some were very, very detailed, and some were not as, not as detailed that much.
Yes, ma'am. There is a criteria, um, my team, we divided it up into two components. The first is compliance. Um, Storms goes into the platform to make sure that they have the local requirements, because those are just documents that are in the document camera. She also makes sure that, um, all information is up to date, that each, uh, group has a parent representative, and all of the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. Then we take the 32 schools, and we divide them up by feeder patterns. And Ms. Wind checks for SMART goals, data-driven, um, initiatives, making sure that's aligned with the district improvement plan. We also look for a cohesive summary and reference to process. After that, we run an action report, and we make sure that they are included, the systemic initiatives, which this year are SuperCore, blended learning, and POCs. And then finally, we run the comprehensive report, which is what I shared. Uh, she, Ms. Wind, did the central attendance area, uh, Spring Creek feeder pattern, Charles B. Acock feeder pattern, Wayne Early Middle College, the Wayne School of Engineering, Wayne Middle High School Academy, and Edgewood, and I did the remainder. So we had those both. So while it's, um, we have a criteria, it's still some subjectivity to it. And, um, some are just very robust, but all did meet those requirements.
Any other questions on the district improvement plan? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
Can I move?
Are you approving both items? Have you already covered as much as you wanted to on this one?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll do, uh, I mean, F and G. So, a motion to approve F and G, Ms. Burden. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Okay, the memorandum of agreement Venture Rehabilitation Group, Inc., and WCPS, Dr. Artis.
Yes, and, um, September, board members, you approved the kindergarten first proposal along with the kindergarten first, uh, budget. The memorandum of agreement had to be updated to change the name from Strive to Thrive to Kindergarten First, and to also incorporate some COVID, um, stipulations with regard to number of children in a room. So it was not a change to content, but rather regulatory.
Any questions on that?
This has nothing to do with our kindergarten and first grade initiative?
It is. It's the memorandum of agreement to...
Is that initial?
Yes.
And do you have any sort of update on how that's going?
Yes, we are due to start, um, November 16th. Uh, we have, um, hired, well, we have not, the vendor has hired all of the staff. We will be providing training to them next Thursday digitally. But if we are unable to do a portion of it digitally, we have, uh, reserved the school street conference area, so that we can achieve social distancing. The resources have been ordered, and we feel like they will be here Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. They will be delivered, uh, specifically to the schools. And then we've also purchased consumable resources, such as pencils, uh, kindergarten paper, those types of things, and they will be delivered here. And then we will, um, make them into take-home bags for the children and deliver them to the schools. So everything has been done in preparation.
So I know that this is a situation where parents had to sign up for it.
Correct.
What kind of response have we had?
Would you like to know about school?
Total percentage is more of like how, what's the overall looking? And then if you could send us the first school, that'd be wonderful.
I, I haven't disaggregated by school, not total.
Okay.
Um, Brogdon Primary has 24, Carver Elementary, 22, Eastern Lane Elementary, 17, Fremont Star, 6, Grantham Elementary, 6, Meadow Lane, 19, Northeast, 14, Northwest, 22, Spring Creek, 22, Tommy's Road, 12, Rosewood Elementary, 22, and North Drive, 0.
Ms. Strickland, that's just kindergarten?
Yeah. We feel that the transportation piece is impacting, um, things very gravely. So, um, Darlene Hodges and Caroline Brown have, uh, applied for a grant through the CARES Act, and will be, um, hopefully awarded that in December and be able to, uh, provide transportation in January.
Did you have to have a specific percentage that, or if they only had two, we're gonna offer?
We're still gonna go.
And so the parents will be, I guess, notified from their inquiry by the principal who sent out the course plan?
Yes, uh, we sent out a letter, and then, um, we sent out a follow-up letter, and they were allowed to sign up. But the sign-up is fluid. We're not cutting anything off, because our goal here is for the children to be here. But by having this small number, as we're starting at the initial, uh, planning stage, we thought we were only gonna be able to do one day a week, because it was gonna be cost prohibitive. But now that we have small numbers, we're gonna be able to allow two days a week. And then as the numbers grow, then we're hoping that we'll get the additional funding in December through the, um, CARES Act, and we can expand the program. And while I was disappointed at some of the numbers, technically, Strive or Thrive is a program that's after school, and we have concentrated it at five schools in the South. This is our first foray into all elementary schools participating and during the day. So I am a little bit relieved that as we're starting here, already in a pandemic-type situation, and never had this type of, um, implementation before, that I can see where the holes are and have a chance to close it before we get that additional funding and, and move forward in January, hopefully with an expanded program.
Just for those that are watching, I had, just this week, a parent asked me about, they could go out there and make sure they had received anything back. A lot of, some of them may have thought that this was gonna begin November 1st, so it is the 16th.
It is the 16th.
And they receive a course plan from their...
Yes, and what we've done, um, Mr. West, is establish a point of contact at each elementary school. We did not want to put anything else on the principals and assistant principals, because they have so much with having to plan. So they have a point of contact, and the vendor is, um, communicating with that person and sending the letters through that person. So if they have not heard at whatever school, they need to, um, see from that principal who that point of contact is, and I can make sure that they are placed in the program.
Okay, because I, I think they're, they're concerned, well, not concerned, but they were curious to know what time, so that they can make arrangements whenever the time hit come.
Yes, we actually had the digital meeting today at 3:00 with Venture Rehab Group, and the program will be 9:00 to 12:30.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Need a motion, Ms. Burden?
Well, yes, I, I made a motion to approve the, I remember writing up a letter standing between the key card and the bottom of this.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you.
Dr. Manning?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'm first sharing with you the memorandum of, of understanding between the Wayne Action Group for Economic Solutions for Wages and our EC program. Earlier this school year, you approved an MOU between wages and the pre-K program. This one is slightly different, because this addresses the EC services that Wayne County Public Schools EC Department provides by going into the pre-K classrooms and working with identified preschoolers.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding between wages and Wayne County Public Schools.
Second. Motion and a second, any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Item J, Dr. Manning?
The next, um, item is a memorandum of agreement between Wayne County Public Schools and Pride in North Carolina, or Pride in C. Um, this is the first of two organizations that we partner with to provide mental health services to our children. And, um, these organizations have been able to provide both telehealth services, um, as well as some in-school services for our students. We've had an agreement with them for some time. And our Wish Centers also have an MOU that's existing with this organization, so that at a school with a Wish Center, the, um, psychologist at the Wish Center can recommend that the students work with these organizations to keep it all under... to keep it all under one umbrella and provide more mental health services for our students. So we're asking you to approve this continuation of this MOU.
I'll move.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz?
And then the last item that I have for you is the MOU between Wayne County Public Schools and Yelverton Enrichment Services. This is the second of the two organizations that we partner with. As you see in the board agenda, Pride serves, um, a number of our schools. Yelverton Enrichment Services serves a different group of schools so that all of our schools are receiving services through some of the mental health organizations. So we ask that you approve this MOU to allow for the continuation of services with Yelverton Enrichment Services at the noted schools.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the MOU between Wayne County Public Schools and Yelverton Enrichment Services.
Second. A motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you, Dr. Manning.
Very much.
Dr. Lewis? Thought you had slipped by tonight.
No, sir. Good evening, everybody. Um, I bring back before you tonight our interest in refinancing an existing loan agreement with Truist. Uh, this is for the performance contracting. Uh, we've been talking with you all for several months now about refinancing this because of the low interest rates that we can get now. I have provided for you in board docs, four documents. Uh, three of them are basically the draft refinancing agreement that shows the changes to the agreement. Uh, you likely noticed that there are no substantial, um, changes to the terms of the agreement itself, just dollar amounts and interest rates. This has been vetted through our board attorneys, it's been vetted through Truist attorneys, and I think this is the agreement that we bring for your approval. Um, one thing I do need from you all in order to set a closing date with Truist and actually sign paperwork to make this official is the passage of the resolution document that was included in board docs. It's a one-page agreement that Truist asked that the Board of Education adopt showing that the entire board, uh, or the board as a collective is in favor of this agreement. Um, I, I think the board representative's signature will be required, but they wanna know that the board as a collective is in agreement with the terms that have been presented. So I ask you for that approval tonight so we can get our closing date set.
We'll need, I need a motion to approve both the resolution and the agreement as presented.
And this, uh, rate is significantly lower. Yes, sir. Uh, the current rate we have within is in the neighborhood of three-point-eight percent. We believe we're gonna get two-point-three. Uh, and the estimated savings over the remaining life of the loan is about three-hundred thousand dollars just in interest.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution that we asked, Mr. Schwartz. The resolution and the finance agreement as presented.
And the revised finance agreement as presented.
And the revised finance agreement as presented. Um, but then I have a quick question for Mr. Schwartz. I know you've reviewed this. Is there anything that we're missing? Because I've read it, but as the attorney, is there anything that we're missing or needs to be drawn to our attention?
No, it's, uh, it's pretty straightforward, and, uh, it's, you know, it's a good deal. You're saving money.
Well, that's, that's the first thing. I don't want to try to miss something in the end. Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Ms. Rouse?
Good evening. Um, tonight I ring before the board the action item of purchase orders and contracts that were presented at October Finance Committee meeting. Please note that we added additional contract, and that is line item number seven, for contract services between Wayne County Public Schools and Wayne Community College for college liaison services. These particular services have been provided for several years, but after speaking with our auditors, we need to make sure that we have a contract in file. Um, in reviewing this information, if you have any questions, the appropriate leadership team members here can assist you.
I actually did have a question, and I'm trying to find the exact page in my documents, because there's a lot of documents here. But just to kind of go over it quickly, I noticed the amount of forty-seven thousand dollars, and in one spot it looks like it says that is a monthly. But in another spot, it looks like it says it's a total. There's a lot of documents in here, so I can't find the page where I saw.
The forty-seven thousand for college liaison?
Yeah, for the monthly versus-
Yeah, they bill us monthly, but probably it's forty-seven thousand.
Okay, so it's not forty-seven monthly, isn't that split across the twelve months?
And that's probably the amount that's left for this school year because it was a total of something more than that. So we have, um, two different liaisons, and each of them works about twenty hours a week or ten or forty hours a week, and they bill us monthly for those liaisons. So the amount of the contract is the total, and we're going to review.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm not ready. Why do we have two?
Because there are two people that split the position. There's two full-time people, and Wayne Community College hires, sorry. Wayne Community College hires that position. And, um, our part of our Wayne Early Middle College agreement with, um, between Wayne Community College and Wimches is that they provide the liaison because a liaison has to be a college employee to be able to register students for college courses, et cetera. So they need to be on the college side. But we have a state funding for our early college, the O-55 line item, that pays for certain positions related to the early college, and the liaison is included as one of those positions. So for, for many years, we've done this, um, where the liaison has been hired. What we're trying to do now is make sure that everything is formalized with an official contract that puts, um, all of that before you to make sure that, um, any dollar expenditure in excess of, of the set amount comes before you. The monthly amount is far below the amount that you normally would approve, but overall, the reimbursement, um, meets that board requirement.
So Wayne Community College hires both?
Yes, ma'am. And in the past, Wayne Community College, um, I, I think there have been times that they hired only one person. We don't-
Full time?
Yes, ma'am. We don't pay their benefits. Um, Wayne Community College would be responsible for that. And at this point, um, our agreement is for the twenty hours a week for each of the two positions, and I believe the workman's comp match that has to go with that. But it's the, the monthly reimbursement that we pay to the college, and then they're completely responsible for hiring that person, any benefits, if it would be a full-time person, et cetera.
Okay. I was aware that, you know, once upon a time, they, they hired one full-time person, but that person was unemployed.
Yes, ma'am. That person retired. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to understand the two.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, sir.
Would we be better served on the requisition? I mean, I'm not insinuating anything, although then he cleared the verbiage up. Would we be better served down at the bottom, as Ms. Trickle said? It says liaison positions, early college, Wayne WCC, monthly billing from college. And he's right on adjacent to that, and it says subtotal forty-seven thousand dollars. Could we change that verbiage to yearly payable and monthly install?
We could. I, we haven't, I didn't realize this was added. We haven't reviewed this.
So, so what we did is took the contract that you guys gave us, the Schwartz and Shaw, Schwartz and Shaw contract template. And the only thing that we revised in your contract template is the duties of the liaison that were added and the dollar figure that they bill us for that.
Okay.
And it actually says on page sixty-five, talks monthly billing from college, subtotal forty-seven thousand, so.
Well, I mean, that's great, but I mean, it really should be cleared up on the requisition involved.
Again, in full disclosure and not to be argumentative and a pain in the rear, I'm concerned about this, because I know you're saying it's state funding, and it's PRC zero-five-five. What else can that maybe be used for? Are we spending the best? I know the college is hiring them. Are we getting the best thing for our buck? Considering everything that's going on, we need to know every single piece of this and seeing forty-seven thousand dollars monthly.
I know.
What, what is the standard? I know what you're saying, but I'm not seeing the best. Does that make sense?
It, that's not, we don't pay that monthly. That amounts to one annual salary split between two people.
Okay, then it definitely needs to be cleaned up because it says, page sixty-five, liaison position, early college, monthly billing from college, subtotal forty-seven thousand dollars. It doesn't say annual billing. It doesn't say broken down. It says monthly billing.
I mean, that would be a real simple fix.
Because looking at it gives me heartburn to approve it because I don't have any documentation from the community college right now of what this actually is. You're asking me to take your word for it, and I want to.
Just take it off. Uh, we'll bring it back.
No problem.
We'll fix it.
But I hate to do that if they need to be paid. But I mean, this is, this is a problem.
Well, my guess is they're already getting paid.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, it's November, and so nevertheless, I mean, we'll clean it up.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to, do you want to prove it's subject to legal review and revision?
Sure.
I would be comfortable without.
Okay.
I guess in your legal review, you'll-
We'll do the cleanup.
This is the annual salary, not the monthly salary.
Okay. Okay, I need a motion to approve it, um, pending legal review of that document.
I will make a motion that we approve it pending legal review.
Okay.
I'll say.
Hold, hold on one second. You, are you?
The entire finance piece. I didn't have, I'm sorry. We polished away because we went over the rest. I didn't have any other. Mr. Chairman, tell me to break that down?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve item number seven on the finance report pending legal review, that this is an annual salary and not a monthly.
This is a genuine item, M.
It's already in the-
Contracts and purchases is item number seven.
But again, number seven, and we can look at the others. Or we could just, I can just pull it off and we review the rest. I would send by-
Are you, are you ready to approve items one through six on contract and order, uh, and purchase orders?
I was comfortable with that, yes, sir, but we've not had a chance to discuss it as a board. So I'll wait with my motion.
How long would it take you, Mr. Schwartz, to get his vote?
Probably get it back tomorrow, but it'd be quick, no?
Yeah.
You, you could have a motion to approve the contracts and purchase orders at items four, M, with item seven subject to legal review and revision.
So I have, I need that motion on the board.
Uh, I was comfortable with that, but I want to make sure we had a chance to discuss one through six, if they have questions.
I'm good with one through six, so.
I'm, I'm good with them.
Okay, well, then I would like to make a motion that we approve item M, contracts and purchase orders with number seven pending legal review. I'm sorry, Mr. Schwartz. Hand revision. Does that work, Mr. Schwartz?
Yes. Need a second?
It's hammer.
I would rather do that.
Seconded by Ms. Burden. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. Thank you, Ms. Rouse. Dr. Harold?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I have a vice chairman, Mr. Board Doc Harold. I have two items for you tonight. The first is out of the dedication plaque for Sutherland High School Gym. You should have a copy of that in your, uh, board docs. I would just like to say that the board decided I might have had an important forecast to give this one that I'm going to camp, so I need to ask some questions. We did have our, um-
If you can shoot that final inspection done.
Our, we did, obviously hasn't been given to us in October, which is great. So we have all our life safety improvements taken into account. We also did our, um, compass walk-through, and Dan's family has delivered very fine products. They have very few issues that are impending at this time. We have officially, we'll be taking over the light building that facility from the member that we're trying to open up there. And the building is pretty much on time and under budget at this point. The only thing we're waiting for now, the last item we deliver, because of COVID, or we delays, uh, is the roll of doors with the concession stand. Everything else is in place there. And we have started, we can have a discussion for the potential ribbon cutting for the facility, obviously looking at the others to date, what we're supposed to do at that time as well. So I wanted to give you that update. I've been a little bit breathless, and Wayne Public Schools is excited to do it, to take that deal. The plaque you have in front of you went through the facilities committee for approval. I can tell you that we selected the same design and color that was used at Meadow Lane. That's there, with the same size. So we also have the new policy for credit plaques for building projects. I included that as well as if you might have had a question about the, the policy or anything that I posted there.
Okay, need a motion to approve that?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, the dedication plaque for Sutherland High School Gym, and also request that we suspend the policy on ninety-three twenty credit plaque for building projects. It does, it does not appear that this actually fits our policy because of item four, it says a statement will appear on the plaque that motivates teachers, students, and community. And that is not actually listed on that plaque. So I'd like to ask for suspension of this policy, and we're going to get approval for that.
Um, is the size of the issue up there?
It is. So I did go back and look at our two documents, uh, two thousand fifteen, before this policy was revised, which is two thousand sixteen. Those plaques are much larger. I remember they appeared in the building, and they did include a statement, but the statement was basically, we'll do provide funding for the building, who's operating the building, and who's serving. So it's commissioners, school board, for the children. Our Meadow Lane flag, when you look at it, you're looking at hundred-and-forty square inches, which is twenty by twenty, or eighteen inches, about twenty-four feet in city. And your letters on the top of the flag are by a bench, and the more people we add. So we did have a discussion, of course, about making sure we don't go out as a policy that's taken, and do this since we're moving in. The building, the names is smaller and smaller. So you know, maybe something that the board wants to look at for plaques in the future because the more things get added, the size of the plaque, the square inches, is what begins to make things very tiny when you look at the plaque. But this plaque is comparable to the Meadow Lane's. And Meadow Lane did not put any, uh, installation over, anyway, as well as listed.
Mr. Faulk, this, the facilities committee, this is the recommendation.
Mr. Chair, the motion to suspend the policy should be a separate motion. It should come first before approval.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the policy on ninety-three twenty credit plaques for building projects and have that policy sent back to the policy committee for further discussion.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Now we need a motion to approve the plaque.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, um, make a motion to approve the dedication plaque of Sutherland High School Gym Project.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you, Dr. Harold.
There's another item, sir. Item other on your agenda is school nutrition surplus inventory. So you have a list in board docs, just to give you a background of this. A child nutrition has items in Belfast School. They have items stored in operations. They have some items that are on the list that are in their child nutrition department that are on the list that potentially come off. We are bringing our field business book as a good indicator for it. Because what's going on, as you remember in previous board meetings, which was last year, the board approved for wages to take Belfast down because it's pretty much opposite building, and Belfast wages. You see the disaster relief plan that the federal government for over a billion dollars because of COVID-nineteen, wages has been concerned that the federal government, we use, of course, that disaster relief money that's due to hurricane work for COVID. So wages has requested the funds earlier because Belfast is going to be like a phase two or three of the project. So they've requested the money earlier to keep from losing the money, which means that ventilation at Belfast would be moved up in time, which therefore means, to get to my point, the items that child nutrition has potential to sort in Belfast need to be liquidated at the end of the surplus.
So a lot of that stuff has been moved from place to place to place to place. And we need to- need to quick spend, man hours moving, because we're not using, a lot of it is old, and there's some items out there that are some value, but there are a lot of things out there that are not, so.
You can look at the list, if you have, there are some things on here that they are not in good time.
Ms. Burden?
I just want some clarification, are, are they tearing down the main doors in the Belfast, or those storage areas in the back?
The, the main, okay, in the Belfast is stored.
Okay, so where are they going to be until, until they have an opportunity to be able to reveal, I guess?
So remember, wages has completely renovated part of that facility, so where it used to be EC services, and where, uh, there's flat, flat classroom roof section back, wages has completely renovated.
Okay.
With the, uh, so places open. Wages, if you remember that session, I know on topic, but wages has some interest in the property as well as growing the program, because it's also potentially putting something back in that space, either modular, or some of them, because they're part of the, uh...
If you do not use that building, how do you even have it?
Also.
So it, it was a really benefit that this disaster money would take it down, and no policy, uh, for the facilities. But seeking approval to, to...
I need a motion to approve the surplus of the equipment.
I'll make a motion to approve the surplus of the equipment, but I had a question on just three items, and I think it's a typo on page two, the six-foot folding tables were purchased in October of twenty twenty.
There are good decent things on here, what we're going to have to do, Ms. Strickland, is, is go back to child nutrition and inventory, everything, to make sure this is completely after, what's in Belfast, what's in operation. There's a couple items on here I was talking to this basis today, because there are some items that are potentially using in the child nutrition building, the office complex, so you may see some computers on here, they're, they're...
Well, there was a lot of computers too, that were not, you know, do we really need to be surplusing some of these computers when I'm only five years old, so the actual motion then would be to surplus all the old...
And Belfast, the...
Belfast property.
If you'll go out there to the building and look, you'll see.
Oh, I don't disagree, but the, the concern was those two thousand and twenty tables.
And one thing we may want to do is reach out to all principals to see if they have any needs for tables or anything like that, because there's, there's some things out there that are, that are in good enough shape to put back into a school, but there's other things out there that are not, a lot of them are not, so.
Well, then do we need to do this before that inventory, as far as the approval?
Well, no, all we're doing is surplus, I mean, we can, Dr. Harold can reach out to the principals to see, because what we're doing for everything that is in Belfast, because these picks asset numbers, did line up everything that is in the building.
Certain things that I would look at, like page six, they got a Windstar Wake Carling event, and is it serviceable, does it run?
That one, I believe, has already been surfaced.
Is that the one?
Yeah.
I want to be sure if that was the one or not, that's why I...
Yes, sir. We will come back, yeah, when, um, we have everything in the board to make sure what's in the building, we'll come back with a notice if you can see, and if you have it passed, we got that determined, how we want to sell these items, and follow our board policy on that, and the name is just out of surplus, and we use an auctioneer, so that I'm, it will have to be a year, because the building in Belfast is not stated for any more than enterance, so once those items are cleared, we have to pull them out and schedule a sale for that. Child nutrition has been selling these items at a slow pace on, like, valid deals, or online surplus website, we're using fast.
There, there's several things out there, and I've talked about, Harold, about, that we need to, once we get it all into the, is to put minimal bids on some of these things, because there's some, there are some food mixers and some kettles and different things, I mean, these, I'm talking to big commercial stuff, that we don't need to have somebody come in here and pay twenty-five dollars, these things are worth twenty-five hundred, three thousand, four, forty-five hundred bucks, and anybody in the rest of the equipment industry will know what these things, the value of them, so some of the larger items, I, I've asked him to see if we can put some minimal bids, because, you know, even if we wind up having to keep them, which I don't think we will, because they'll still sell, because some of these things are twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars new, so we don't need to let this stuff be sold for a hundred bucks.
There are some things out there too, that was in storage, if you remember, we had a fire at Charles David High School, and some of those items were replaced, and some of those things that were, were burned, potentially then were cannibalized and parts, because some of our equipment, and our cafeteria is, as you know, is very old, and we're not able to find parts for it as well, so we estimate that. But the biggest issue that has gone, obviously, is finances, the child nutrition can use the funds, as well as the, the, the issues that we're dealing with that, everybody's trying to, to...
And this is a way to improve some money for our child nutrition. Ms. Burden, do you have something you want to say?
No, he just answered it, so this money will go back to child nutrition, okay?
It has to, doesn't it?
I think it does, I wasn't sure.
Mr. Schwartz?
Just for clarification, the, the recommended act says motion to approve, request the surplus of school nutrition items that are currently stored at Belfast. This list includes items...
It will have some items that may be stored in operations.
It has items, some items that are stored at Belfast and some that are not?
Correct.
All right, so are you asking to approve a, to approve a request to prepare a surplus list of child, of school nutrition items?
And surpluses, and surplus, I might go ahead and be able to do as well.
Okay, the board technically can't approve items for surplus without knowing what they are. So I, I think would, would, is there a need to do this before the next board meeting?
Not at this time, sir.
So my suggestion would be to take this off and come back if the board's in, in agreement on that, or change this to a motion, um, to approve a request to prepare a surplus list of school nutrition items that are currently stored at Belfast.
Is it not, no, you don't hear where they're stored?
Yeah, he's saying that some of the others are not at Belfast yet.
I understand that, but I'm just, I mean, the list is here in front of us, so.
I don't see it listed.
I don't, I can't figure out where the...
Dr. Harold, you can just differentiate between what's at Belfast and what's not, it's a request, it's a surplus, what's at Belfast.
I can, if that is, is, come back to the board for approval. I can easily even know that, but this is, this obviously going to have things on, this is the entire inventory.
Because we may want to move some things to Belfast, where we want to empty Belfast. I'm just saying, for to sell, so.
Correct, yes.
There may be some more things that I'll have to...
I, I suggest that this doesn't have to be approved tonight, that it be taken off the agenda, and you come back with a list of the actual properties being surplus, because you can't tell from this list what's being surplus and what's not.
Okay.
Doctor, shall we make a motion to ask him to do that, so just get him up to ask him to do it?
You can, but you don't need that.
Okay, I'll get off that now.
You don't need a motion to remove it, is that all? Since we approved the agenda, it's on there.
Right, it, there's no action taken.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Harold, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Merrill?
Thank you, members of the board. Request approval for you to authorize a first payment to the state of North Carolina Low Wealth Fund. This money will come from the fund balance that will be fully verified by our auditors in the next month or two, but I'm being conservative on a first payment. I do believe that the fund balance exceeds one million, but I just want to go with five hundred thousand right now. This was in a finance committee and, and wanted to bring it forward. As Leslie watches expenditures during the course of the year, we hope to be able to make another payment to the state before this fiscal year is over, but this would be a, a first, uh, first payment to the state. We've notified, uh, financial section of the state that we needed board approval, and here it is, and we want to make that first payment, so.
Okay, need a motion to approve the payment?
Make a motion to be approved, the first payment.
Motion and second, any other discussing questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Merrill. Uh, Ms. Strickland, it's time for our, um, well, just so everyone will know, we didn't have anyone who wished to speak tonight, um, we passed through that at five-thirty, but we already knew that we had no speakers, so anyway, our consent agenda.
Sounds good. A consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and/or items are routine business or have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings, open to the public, and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member wants separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Uh, can I amend? Because there was, the, with the, leaving the closed session minutes closed, would that be, I know I didn't do it properly, I'm not sure, because I missed it.
You can, you can have, the motion to approve the consent agenda and, um, with the exception of, of keeping the closed session minutes of October five closed, is that your motion?
My motion.
Okay, did I set in that?
You can do the first one.
Yeah, I set in.
The motion and a second, uh, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Unanimous, that brings us to our board member comments. Carter, come on up.
Well, first I want to congratulate Ms. Burden, Mr. Henderson, on their reelection to the board in the next four years. Very good. Sorry to hear, uh, Mr. Falk, um, I think you've been a passionate advocate of Wayne County Public Schools since the day I met you, your service has always been in your blood, but there's been fire department, health department, your church, I don't know how you do it, I've seen your schedule, but, um, if I give you one piece of advice going forward, learn to say no.
Mr. Henderson?
I would also like to congratulate Ms. Burden, and, 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 and unfortunately, Mr. Falk, I hate to see you go off the board, but, uh, more importantly, I'm, I'm very excited about the prospects of Southern Way Gym opening up and playing basketball, I want to thank Dr. Harold for being on that all, all the way, I'm looking forward to what the dedication would look like, I hope, and I'll say this seriously, I hope it is much better than I thought it would be, thank you.
Mr. Latham?
Well, I'm going to jump on the bandwagon here and congratulate Mr. Henderson and Ms. Burden for being reelected to the board, and, uh, Mr. Falk, sorry to see you, enjoy some time at the beach. And other than that, thanks to the staff again for all your hard work, it's been a very interesting year, I think I got here right at the time of when it started getting interesting, and nothing has changed, so keep up the good work, thank you.
Ms. Burden?
Well, I guess that all suits him, this is the track for today, congratulations to, um, Mr. Henderson, uh, and he knows I have an issue with him. He ran under polls, so he sat back while we were out at the polls, uh, in the Navy Dixon, and Mr. Falk, I know that you are not going to listen to Dr. Demakos, you will find something else to, uh, uh, provide service to the organization. Uh, I'd like to also take the opportunity to, um, recognize, uh, Mr. Mark Hobrick, uh, for, uh, Operations United, and the Triangle Chapter of the Dillard-Billsborough Alumni and Friends. Uh, the Dillard, the, the Triangle Chapter sought out the Cramden Institute and Southern Bank, and Southern Bank paid for fifty computers, uh, to be donated to students who needed their own devices, and that came about through the, uh, Dillard Alumni, the Raleigh Triangle Chapter. And on yesterday, um, these computers were distributed to the students. Mrs. Wood from, um, Northwest was there as one of the principals, she thought she needed to come to receive them and then give out, but the parents were there with the students, and so fifty computers were given to fifty students, and because of what was going on, people came around and asked questions, so now we have to see if we can find someone to pay for more computers. Uh, I would very pleased that out of that fifty, um, the majority of them, the largest majority of them, went to elementary students, and that was where we were running show. There were, um, um, one high school, um, um, and, um, two middle schools, other than that, uh, all of the schools, uh, all of the students came from elementary schools, so, and that is part of the Dillard-Billsborough, the National Dillard-Billsborough Alumni and Friends Incorporated, I thank them.
Tell it, Mr. Falk. Ms. Strickland?
I have no comments tonight, thank you, sir.
Okay, but I'd like to say, start off with Mr. Falk, I appreciate what you've done since you've been on the board, I, I truthfully say I've never asked you to serve on any committee or do anything that you've ever told me no, so I don't know if that did you a favor or not, but I, I do appreciate what you've done, and I, I appreciate your passion for the students of Wayne County Public Schools and the community that you live in, I bet you, you do a great job, but anyway, thank you, enjoy yourself, so, um, I'd like to welcome Ms. Rouse, I don't think I did that officially last meeting, I don't think so, but anyway, Ms. Rouse, her finance director, welcome.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank, um, Dr. Merrill and the staff, the leadership team, um, for your hard work, I, I know, and, and also all the employees of Wayne County Public Schools, maintenance, operations, principals, teachers, custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, I mean, these are all, again, uncharted, unnavigated waters for every LEA across the country, it's not just here in Wayne County, they're all dealing with the same thing, and I'd just like to thank each of you for, I know you're being asked to do more work and, and different work, but thank you for what you do. And with that, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, I don't think we'll be back before Thanksgiving is over, and, um, at this point in time, I know Vince sitting over there chomping at the mic, because he thinks I forgot him, but I'm paying him the honor of speaking next to last before our superintendent, Mr. Falk.
Well, I'd also like to congratulate, uh, Ms. Burden and Mr. Henderson, and also give you my condolences. Dr. Demakos, Ms. Burden, Mr. West, Ms. Strickland, Mr. Latham, Mr. Henderson, it has been a great honor and a pleasure to serve with you all on this board, and serve our community and our, our students and our citizens. Everyone should have the opportunity to serve on a school board during a pandemic such as COVID. The general public has no idea what we've been through. It has been one of the most stressful times in my life. I, I have triplets and one that's ten months old, I have four in diapers, four in cribs, four with bottles, and this has been much more stressful than raising those four. You may not believe it, but on Tuesday night, I felt like a great weight had been lifted off my shoulders. Uh, I said a few months ago that people could run me off this board and I got plenty to do, and I still stick by that, and I meant what I said then, and I mean, I mean it now. It had always been my intention to serve one term on this board, I wanted to be a parent on, on this board, to, to be able to, to bring back what my kids are going through, and it's been even, to me, even more important, going through COVID and having four children in school going through COVID and, and be able to come back with their experiences, and on top of that, having a wife that's teaching in the schools, teaching COVID, on top of that, teaching music in COVID and they can't sing, so, um, I just want to make Wayne County a better place to, to work, to live, and to play. I've always lived by the motto that God don't make no mistakes, and I believe that is true today. I leave my fellow board members with a lot of tough decisions that, uh, I'm glad I don't have to make anymore. I pray that you, I, I pray that you will pray of those decisions and do what's best for our children. I want to thank Ms., Ms. Carrie with the New Old North for her article that she wrote. It attempted to relieve me of blame for our financial difficulties, I don't know if y'all got to read it. I don't know if y'all got to read it. She said that it is brazen and irresponsible to blame Vin when he had literally nothing to do with it. Ms. Carrie, I just wish you had have written that several months ago when we were bashing this board so badly over our financial status and, and the things we were doing wrong. Oh, that might have helped me some back then, but anyway, I didn't mind being the fall guy. So let me say, I am disappointed that I'm not able to continue on this board. I had a lot of dreams and passions that I wanted to see on these, for our schools, and I hope that somebody will take up that mantle and, and keep them going. But I am very, very happy this evening, knowing that I now have more time to spend with my children, more time to spend with my wife. I am truly a blessed man, and I look forward to the path that God sends me on next. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Dr. Merrill, before you wrap it up, I do need to mention that Governor Cooper, and I was asked to do this, and so I'm not going to read the resolution, but he has declared, um, November as the North Carolina Career Development Month, as well as November the 18th, the North Carolina Career Development Coordinator Day. I just wanted to share that with you, Dr. Merrill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Burden, Mr. Henderson, congratulations. Mr. Falk, it's been a pleasure to work with you. Thank you. I think you know I've been, been working a little bit on the relationship with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. It's probably time to, to bring in a reminder of all that does happen, uh, by the two liaisons, the school system and the, and the base liaison. Some of the things that are going on, uh, military family life counselors, lottery seats for school of engineering, deployment support, military student clubs, it's quite a list. But I wanted to bring to your attention something we're exploring right now, in, in very early, sort of meeting and, and whiteboarding, the idea of, of housing a school on the base that would be jointly attended by, uh, children of the military and children of Wayne County who may not be military. The base has shown us, uh, a couple of buildings there that have been used for training of the adults, uh, would work very well for a school cafeteria in a building nearby. So we are toying, Colonel Helfenstein, the new commander who came in 1st of July, we're toying with the idea of how we might, uh, create that collaborative effort. We've got a, a, a very brief meeting where the chair and I and Leslie will meet with the county and the commander tomorrow morning just to look at what this thing might be about. It's in, it's in the clouds right now. It's very loose, uh, but we're excited about the possibility and what it could bring and, and, and improvement of relationships and more opportunities for, for kids in the military and for kids in Wayne. So don't really even have the program that's going to go inside it yet, so just wanted to bring it to your attention. If anyone is, is either excited about it or has heartburn about it and it's a terrible idea, uh, just let me know and get in touch, but just wanted to let you know we're toying with something that could be really exciting, so that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Merrill. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
I will, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, Mr. Schwartz. Motion to adjourn.